Okay. I want to call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting today on November 15th, 2021, at 6:01 PM to order. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Maxwell, Becker.
Here.
O'Flaherty.
Here.
Penny Graham.
Here.
Stoker, Wright, Vice Chair McMahon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The first thing I need is an approval of the agenda from this night's meeting. Can I get an approval for the agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by O'Flaherty, a second. Second by Becker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, say a sign. Okay, the agenda is approved. The first thing on the agenda this evening is going to be, I need the approval of the minutes from the October 4th meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 4th meeting of 2021.
So approved.
A motion by Penny Graham to approve the minutes from the October 4th meeting, second.
A second.
A second by Becker. All in favor of approval of the minutes from October 4th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, say a sign. Okay, the minutes from the October 4th meeting are approved. This is the public participation portion of the meeting, so the floor is open to anyone wishing to speak on the record. Seeing none, I will close the public participation portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to new business. The first item on new business is the platification for the Northland Plaza Resubdivision Number Three, Sycamore Road, B-33, Northland Plaza LLC.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Buick. I'm an attorney in Sycamore, Illinois, representing the petitioner, B-33 Northland Plaza LLC. They're the owner of the Northland Plaza Shopping Center out on Sycamore Road, and they had identified as they were seeking to attract a corporate tenant, large-scale corporate tenant, that the 30-foot easement that runs north to south on the eastern edge of the property, in a short portion, a short run, encroached onto the loading dock area by a distance of about seven feet for a run of little over 100 feet back behind what is now the TJ Maxx-occupied portion of the shopping center. TJ Maxx, as the tenant, was very concerned about this, has asked the owner to seek a partial vacation of this portion of utilities easement, and that is why we're here tonight. B-33's engineer, JLH Land Surveying, has prepared a plat of vacation slash abrogation, which they wanted to creatively add to the title because they want it to be clear that they're not seeking the full vacation of this utility easement at all. It's a small portion of a much longer and broader section, and it's simply going to eliminate the possibility of using the utility easement in that 100-foot by 7-foot section by the loading dock. So, Mr. Olson has helpfully prepared some slides that hopefully I can use to operate this. This is the actual plat of vacation and abrogation. The little crosshatched area, if you're able to see it, is the only area that is sought to be vacated or abrogated of the easement. That's a little bit of a close-up there, and it just shows you, it's kind of hard to get a sense of this, although I'm going to show you a couple of pictures here that hopefully will. But the gray area is a portion of the building that sticks out, and then that dotted area is a ramp that runs to the loading dock. And so the loading dock loads, if you're able to see it, the loading dock loads right there and right there. Now, this is a 2003 easement, and I presume that it was created in a way that, just as all of you know, the building has been there for a lot longer than 2003. This shows the utilities running through there, and we have this Julie, and the blue dash represents the water line, which is on the outside of the area. That's kind of, again, you can see where the loading dock areas are on the left of the picture, and that's looking the other direction, looking back to the south. So we've taken care to ensure that there are no utilities actively giving easements. What we have had, what we have encountered, is that some of our utility companies are rather large bureaucracies. So, we had reached out weeks ago and gotten the permission of Frontier Comcast, all of the other utilities that have already signed off on this. We continue to await final approval from NICOR and ComEd. ComEd shouldn't be an issue because their power is over in that area, but they have a process where they would like anyone who seeks an abrogation or vacation of an easement to pay them a significant review fee. I got a lovely email indicating that they have a 72-day period where they'll examine this, and they're expediting everything, but with the holidays, it may be even longer than that. So we anticipate absolutely no opposition from ComEd, but we will be waiting a bit for their final approval. NICOR, on the other hand, I believe sent people out last week to verify that their pipe is not in the area. Once they get that personal verification, they will give us the approval. So, in accordance with what Mr. Olson has prepared for you tonight, what we would be seeking is approval and forwarding of this plat of abrogation to the City Council, subject to final confirmation from all of the relevant utilities that they will indeed not object to this. I think in your packet you also have copies of approvals that we've already received. So that would conclude my extremely detailed presentation for tonight. If anyone has any questions about this, this is relatively a simple request, and again, the owner is making it because the tenant had asked and doesn't want any disruption. Oh, and I should show, I guess, the final point, if it's viewable here. It's hard to say. There's really, I mean, it's, the loading dock area is far more than seven feet. The encroachment just goes over those bars at about six feet or so past that, so that's the area, shouldn't be disruptive, but it will protect the tenants' use of the space.
Does anybody from the planning commission have questions for Mr. Buick?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kevin went through it very well, explained pretty simple, this vacating a portion of the easement, and that's shown on exhibits. You know, how the utilities are vacationing, getting the releases, working on those, so the sample motion that's prepared allows them to go forward with the approval, and on the council, subject to all utility company releases being obtained prior to the recording. So once they get the ComEd, sounds like that's one of the longest, once they get that, then they go and record the plat. But we recommend approving the sample motion that's prepared.
Any questions for staff? Does anybody want to give a motion?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of a plat of vacation for the Northland Plaza Resubdivision Number Three, dated November 4th, 2021, prepared by JLH Land Surveying, Inc., as shown on Exhibit A, subject to all utility company releases being obtained prior to the recording of the plat.
Do we have a motion on that floor from Becker, or is there a second?
One second.
A second from O'Flaherty. The clerk, call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penny Graham?
Yes.
Stoker? Wright? Maxwell? Vice Chair McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, everyone. I'm running up to the voicemail of Kingston from here, so.
All right, Kevin.
Yes.
Thank you, Kevin.
The second item under new business is a public hearing. We have a petition by DeKalb Harlem LLC, represented by Robert Tubman Arrow, requesting approval of a special use permit for a self-storage facility, interior unit access, to be located
All right, good evening, everyone. So, I'm Robert Tubman Arrow with Mark Robinson. We represent the petitioner, DeKalb Harlem LLC. We're seeking approval for a special use permit for a self-storage facility, interior use access at 1700 Sycamore Road. To give a little bit of background, DeKalb Harlem LLC owns the majority of that shopping center. The only part that they don't own is the Mardi Gras, the bowling lane that's attached, but otherwise, everything else sits on property, DeKalb Harlem LLC. What we're seeking to do is to open up at 1700 Sycamore Road, the area is, it's narrow and, it's a little hard to see, but right here, this is the address, 1700 Sycamore Road. What we're seeking to do is to put an interior self-storage facility there that has nothing in the exterior, everything is inside. To give a little bit of background to that, we operate four of these units, or four sites in the Rockford area. One of them is similar, where it's in an old Kmart, where it's all interior access, there's no outside storage, and then there's a single-point entry here where everyone will come in and go out of. It would contain--
If I may, I'm going to interrupt you on that one. That old Kmart, that Kmart sat empty for 15 years at the corner of Four Hills and Riverside. I passed it every day on way to work. He passed it, we lived there. And the only single period, first and last year, we bought that property, and the first tenant they brought in was a box office, indoor self-storage. And just having the building painted and used, and some colors on the side of it enticed Taco Bell, came out in the corner, a Starbucks plus 10,000 square feet of retail space came next to it, and all of these under construction, the steel went up today, and we have one other outlot that's going to start construction at 10,000 square feet in the spring. So, it is still an attractor. Again, the building sat there for over 10 years, 15 years, empty. We don't want that to happen to this shopping center, so we're trying to get ahead of that
And then to give an idea about this particular unit, the 1700 Sycamore Road, the last tenant in there was Big Lots, and they moved out at the end of 2015. We've been trying to lease it out, but we've been having extreme difficulty doing so due to a downturn in retail occupancy. And it's also kind of in irregular shape, it's a deep unit, and it makes it difficult to split up into smaller square footage, just because of how deep the space is, and there's not enough frontage space facing outwards in the shopping center. So what we're looking to do is to utilize a 20,000-square-feet in there from front to back for interior self-storage. Customer self-storage is on the rise, to give an idea, the four box offices that we have, the one that's in that, in the Kmart, it's at 95% capacity right now, so there's huge demand now. All four of them are filling up, the ones that have been around for a little bit longer at 95-plus percent capacity. The other ones that are relatively new are filling up fast, much faster than we had anticipated. So there's a huge demand. Looking at other self-storage facilities in the area, you could check online, it's, or make phone calls, that there's wait lists for a lot of self-storage facilities, and none of them offer the type of self-storage that this is, where it's completely interior access and climate-controlled. There are climate-controlled facilities that's in, it's in Sycamore, just north on Sycamore Road. There's a wait list for anyone that's climate-controlled, but they're all exterior access. So there is a demand for climate-controlled, especially now with the pandemic. A lot of people are working from home, creating home offices, needing to create space, so there's a huge demand for space and storage. And this is a way that allows people to store things and not have to worry about the outside elements or fragile belongings, worrying about humidity. It's all climate-controlled, well-lit, secure to access, so people can only get into it with a personalized code, and again, it's secure. So it's not outside, there's no fencing, they don't have to worry about going at night, it's all well-lit. And I'll get into in just a second some pictures from the facility that's in the Kmart building. There's going to be multiple sizes of storage units to cater to all types of needs, so it'll range from fairly a walk-in closet to a small room for people to continue people actions on what they need. So it's something that creates use for something that hasn't been used since the end of 2015. And part of the thing that we've been trying to explain is it's economically obsolete, the building is, because there's a lot of vacancies in the building. What we're looking to do is fill up some of that space, fill up and create some tenancy in addition to what's already there, to make it more attractive for future use and development of the property. It's not the most attractive space to lease out because it's south of all the main retail that's on Sycamore Road, so it's tough to compete with it. So the little that is coming in, this isn't the focal point of Sycamore Road for retail. We want to try to change that a little bit, make this a more attractive option. One way of doing that is to decrease the amount of vacancies that are in the building so that we can get more revenue to further improve the facility. Just a few years ago, we changed the lighting out at the facility. I believe this new roof is, this is here.
Yes. So we spent a million dollars between the asphalt, the lights, and the roof, so we're definitely going to maintain this segment. We just want to make sure that those tenants excited as well.
And with the increased revenue, we can continue to make those improvements and make it an attractive option for the remaining vacancies, but it's just one less vacancy that would be there. There'd be no modifications to the outside, the exterior of the building, other than We comply with all our regulations of the plan development commercial. There's plenty of parking space to accommodate for this, to give an idea, the interior self-storage facility that we have in Rockford is double the size of this, and they conservatively get about 30 visitors a day on the weekdays, and then 40 to 50 visitors on weekends. So taking about half that, it might be about 15 visitors a day that we'd expect on weekdays and 20 to 25 on weekends. So there's plenty of parking, there's over 300 spots in the front of the building. We're using existing space for the interior self-access, we're not building anything new. It wouldn't decrease the value of anything around it, because, again, we're not doing anything to the outside of the building to make it unattractive, so we're not putting, you're asking to put up a five-story self-storage building, because directly to the east, southeast, there's these residential homes here. So there'd be no change in their viewpoint in what's going on there, but it would benefit the residential neighborhood in that area and everyone in DeKalb to have an option for self-storage that's conveniently located, and you can run errands while you're doing it, because it's right in the commercial area, just to the south of it. So it's a very convenient location. Most of the self-storage that's in DeKalb is in the outskirts. There's very few options that are in the heart of DeKalb, and that's what we're looking to do. And again, we're looking to do it in a way that doesn't create an eyesore, because it's part of an existing building. If anything, it reduces that because it'll be filled, it'll be a spot that's been vacant for over six years, it'll be filled. So it'll create the idea that we're bringing business in, and it's just one less facade Based on that, I think that Mark gave a--
Turn it on through the slides.
Oh, sure. You know, I'm too busy talking. So, this is an aerial view here, again, this is where we're looking to put the facility here, 20,000-square-foot facility. So this gives an idea of where the buildings are, but again, it's in here, there's going to be a zoom up of that. So this is a little zoom up, so we can see here, all these boxes and hash marks inside are the self-storage units. They're all varying sizes, of the most popular sizes that we have at the self-storage facility in the old Kmart. So the access point would be up here, that's facing Sycamore Road, and then those the only entrance and exit points. And then one thing we have is, it wouldn't be staffed, it would be entered through a passcode or key code. There's security cameras that we have in our facilities, and I'll show one picture that gives an example of that, but there'd be cameras at the front, that cameras throughout the facility so that it can be monitored and maintained. So there would be a regular maintenance crew that stops by, and regular employees that stop by just to make sure that everything's in order, nothing's broken. And just having the security cameras, it allows for better security, number one, and then if anything happens, there's recordings of what happened, and it allows for fast response if there's an issue, or if there's something going on that needs immediate attention. So this is a view of the Kmart now, if you can see here. So everything's well-lit, there's a security camera here, but generally at all the intersections, there's cameras that have views of each side of the hallway and down each hallway and each access point, so that everything can be viewed and recorded. This is, again, another T-intersection, you can see the camera right at the top by the exit sign. And then this is to give you an idea on what the interior of a self-storage unit would look like. So there is metal bedding at the top, but it allows for free air flow, so when there's air conditioning or heating, depending on the season, and make sure that each unit can share into that warm or cool air. And then this is an example of one unit that's from the inside, looking out into the hallway. And then this is the logo for the box office self-storage, and then we have some mock-ups coming up next, just to show what it'll look like on the building. And the building, the sign would be in accordance with the ordinance as far as size. Right here, this is what it would look like. And this is from the parking lot facing in, and then the next shot I'll have is from Sycamore Road, looking at the building here, to give an idea of the impact. So it's pretty discreet, it doesn't scream out self-storage, it's an attractive logo, and it's not something that degrades the visual appearance of the shopping center.
Maybe just a little bit of history, too. I understand there could be some reticence about self-storage. We understand we're a third-tier center in this municipality, that this year, Northland Mall before, there's some bigger tenants there, other bigger tenants are in other places, but the truth is, there's not as many big tenants anymore that fill some of these spaces. In the last decade, we've seen more turn into churches and libraries, community centers and other things. And I was interested, I've been in real estate for three years, and I just looked up a few things before we met with you the first time, and it was in 1962 that Walmart, Target, and Kmart all opened their first big box stores. And then in 2017, as a result of the Great Depression, the recession, whatever you want to call it, 6,700 big stores like Target or Toys R Us, Kmart, they closed after. So reverse is going on right now, you can't demolish them all, and we believe this is an attractive use that will keep the space normalized, people will be coming and going. We spent a lot of effort, I can tell you that pretty much every week, we're talking with the mall fitness, and Hernandez, the Mexican grocery store, and the Endcamp here. All throughout COVID, we've bent over backwards to try to help them to maintain viability. I just sent a message to Abel Hernandez today, I call them our partners, I said, Abel, we're forced partners now, we're happy to be your partner, we have to, it feels like a partner to communicate, so we're trying to keep everything else viable here. And again, we've reinvested in the building, our hope is to come back to you in the not-too-distant future and talk about putting another building up here. There's a lot of attraction for smaller retail buildings, just not with big spaces anymore. So I guess this is, this wasn't White Castle? It wasn't White Castle. I guess unless we missed something. Until he said we missed something, he ended up reaching out and making a presentation, we didn't stipulate to his presentation as well, in terms of basis for authorizing this under your current code.
Thank you, gentlemen. Does the city staff have the presentation on this?
Yeah, I'll just briefly go over the staff report, and obviously give a very good description what's proposed. So the site is DeKalb Shopping Center, it's a PDC, we resolved that a couple of years ago to accommodate a video gaming establishment, they had a distance issue, so, but the PDC, the ordinance states that the uses under the GC apply here, and self-service storage facilities, interior unit access, is a special use. We break it down in the UDO between interior unit access and exterior. The climate-controlled interior is what they're proposing, of course, and that's a special use. As we mentioned, it's, demand's on the rise, we don't have any facility like this in DeKalb. Sycamore has some, they're most similar, it's probably the old County Market, if anybody's familiar with that, Sycamore has some of that, but certainly it's in the demand, we do get inquiries quite a bit of these types of facilities, particularly the exterior unit access, so, and they've indicated the, you know, the issue with trying to get a retail tenant in there, it's been vacant since 2015. So they're providing, they're showing that it's difficult to lease out with the market, the way the space is laid out in terms of the dimensions, it is hard, retail is suffering certainly with going in some locations. So this looks like they have a variety of storage unit sizes, no modifications to the exterior of the building, beyond the mall sign that's going to be proposed, so they're not selling any goods or retail, there's prohibition on hazardous materials in the units. As noted, the parking's way more than adequate, over 300 spaces, there's no employees, so they're averaging about, based on their other, they're sitting in Rockford, I think, they need to create about 15 visitors a day during the week, and the weekend's about 20, 25 visitors a day, is what we're anticipating. So, added with parking, added facilities on the site, the UDO does have some additional standards, we added a few years ago regarding self-storage for interior unit access, we require that it be an existing building, so they're doing that. And that shows that it's, the space is somehow obsolete, and we've shown that in terms of the economic, that it's functional, too, that it's lighted up a little bit different, so it's hard for retail sales. They want to try and get a tenant in there that brings additional traffic and also use the money to do improvements to the shopping center itself, so this is a good adaptive reuse of the space. We have the standards for special use in the staff report, meets all requirements of the UDO, and how it's obsolete, and the space, they're trying to improve the property, it's not going to impact the neighborhood, it's our existing space, there's no change at all to the exterior, very little traffic impacts at all, and the benefit to the area and the business community in the neighborhood, and not really cause any harm to the center. We did get a kind of public input, copies are in your packet, and I did make a copy of one, we got after the general was posted. Two letters of support from neighbors, one from Wendy Ziegler, 1427 North 14th Street. She actually had a question about if the building was demolished, I called the president and advised him how it went, and explained where the space is going to be. And then we got one after the general was posted from Cynthia Dolder, 1407 East Teresa Road, indicating her support for the proposal. So we recommend approval, and a sample motion is prepared that simply approves the special use permit as indicated on Exhibit A, which is on the screen.
All right, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing done, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion. Do you think the commission have questions?
I have one.
So, I'm assuming 24/7 access with a code. No employees on site, but is there a monitoring station, somebody wants to get in at 11:30 at night, but their code isn't working? Is there a number that they can contact that can provide ingress or egress?
We have on-call people. There's often, for the outdoors, in the middle of winter, there's game issues sometimes, we get those calls and get out there. We get those calls and get out there.
And that's 24/7 monitoring? It looks like about slightly over 100 units, is that about?
189.
How many?
189.
189, okay. It is sizable.
How big is the Kmart facility as a whole, Bob?
It's about almost 40,000, a little over 40,000 square feet. But as far as how many units they have, it's just about double, let them, is what this answer.
And that's at 95% capacity, you said?
Yes.
And we're expanding inside of that right now.
Nice. I have a question. Can I ask a question? You say that there's no hazardous waste that's allowed in there or anything, drugs, things like that, but nobody's monitoring it, how do you know?
We prohibit it in our leases as well. We have not, to knock on wood, had a plan.
Haven't.
I think if they're going to do that, they'll do it in outdoor centers that are much less, that aren't in the middle of the city, whatever. We've had no issue so far, and I hope to do it that way.
And then the units themselves inside, it looked like it was lit. I was just curious how that worked. Are they lit, like if someone opens the door, it lights up?
Generally, there's a gray ceiling, so you've got light coming in from above. Here are like 12 units. But then the lighter mesh that goes across the top, so you can't get into somebody else's.
I looked up online, some of your units in Rockford, they look nice. At first I thought, whoa, wait, what's going on? But then when I saw it, I'm like, oh, that's actually pretty attractive.
We're building up for hand, the boxed up for hand. There'll be, you'll see more visible places around Rockford in the region. We're dedicated to the region. I used to drive down here every day, I was employed at Duplex Products.
Oh.
Bethany Rowe, before we sold to Reynolds and Reynolds a few years back.
Are they contracted month-to-month? Are they contracted three months at a time, six months, short-term? How typically? I know some, some they have a minimum month, like some of them, I think they have a three-month, six-month.
We try to get a longer term, but if people want short-term, they can have short-term.
What's the minimum?
It'll be a month.
A security policy, I assume?
Yes. Yes.
How often do you have people not, just out of curiosity, how often do you have people not pay, like you have to go in there and, you know, it looked dumb or?
There's a small percentage every month where we're having to go to sale of their stuff. It's just, some of its family heirlooms that have marginal value. It's not, we're not doing anything super valuable like you see on TV yet.
What?
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for your patience while we're talking about. Thank you. Is there a motion? Can I get a motion from one of the members?
One. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented and findings of fact, I move the planning and zoning commission recommends to the city council approval of a special use permit for a self-storage facility, interior unit access, be located at 1700 Sycamore Road, and then tenant space as indicated on exhibit A, dated 11/10/21.
We have a motion on the floor from O'Flaherty. Can I get a second for the motion? There's a second from Becker. Any discussion before we call the roll? Okay, the court will call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Tanya Graham?
Yes.
Stoker? Wright? Maxwell? Vice Chair McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, are there any staff reports?
Yeah, just a few things. As you probably noticed, we have a new recording secretary, Stephanie Turner. Stephanie's administrative assistant with the city manager's office, so she's stepping in. Aaron has got a promotion, so he's a building permit coordinator for the city now, so he's got a little more duties. So Stephanie will be taking over in terms of recording secretary for the commission, so.
Oh.
Congratulations, Aaron.
Congratulations, both.
I did send you email regarding some training opportunities. So I did hear from a few of the regional planning commission, which is for the county, about the municipalities, which I'm the rep for the city on. We're sponsoring a training on December 9th. People from the Illinois EPA, American Planning Association, are going to come out and provide in-person training for the commission members of the communities who want to attend. And that'll be on Thursday, December 9th, from 6 to 8 at the DeKalb County Outreach Building out of the nursing home campus out there. This is a good opportunity for training for the members. So I did hear from Steve and Bill and Shannon. And I think Trixie was interested, too. There's also a, so let me know by the end of the week, and I'll get ahold of Max and Jerry. Maria's attending, actually another opportunity. It's the same session, but on the same people. It's virtual, that's on November 17th. We are doing that on Friday night, so that's good opportunities for training. So just let me, I'll get ahold of two other members. We'll provide more information as it approaches October down to April. So that'd be a good opportunity to hear from some experts and people that do it, have a lot of experience. So be able to be in the same room with other commission members from other communities, too. So that'd be really nice. That's all I have.
All right. Is there any, anything from the commissioners to the report? Seeing done, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
We just wanted to stick around for a while.
Tanya Graham, to adjourn this meeting? Can I get a second? Second by Becker. All in favor of adjourned the meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull this thing aside. Okay, so done.
All right.